And we're on. And we're on. Let's call the Andover City Council Meeting to order, June 11th, I should say. Start with the roll call to my left.
Caroline Hale, Councilmember.
Troy Taber, Councilmember.
Ben Lawrence, Mayor.
Clark C.R. Nelson, Councilmember.
Greg Schneider, Councilmember.
Mike Warrington, Councilmember.
Mike Keller, Police Chief.
Donna Davis, Chief Financial Officer.
Chad Russell, Fire Chief.
Jennifer McCosland, Assistant City Administrator.
Andrew Kovar in for J.T. Klaus, City Attorney.
Les Mangus, Director of Public Works.
Susan Renner, City Clerk.
Mark Dettler, City Administrator.
All right, item three is invocation. I see Mr. Tubal, Brad Tubal here from Grace First Church. Thank you for joining us.
Let's pray. Our Father, thank you for such a beautiful day. We see your power and your creation each day. We're so thankful for this community and for what it means to us. Thankful for those who defend it and protect it and for those who legislate within it, who make it safe for all of us. We pray a blessing on tonight's proceedings. We pray in Jesus' name, amen.
Do you stand with us for the plugs of allegiance? Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number five this evening is the public forum. Is there anyone here that wishes to speak? Yes, come on up. What brings you to our humble palace?
I don't have an opportunity often to be here. I'm Susan Humphries, Representative, State Representative for Andover. And because we're mostly in Topeka on Tuesdays up until the end of May. So I'm just here to thank you all for your service and just see what's going on in Andover and just be part of it. So thank you so much for doing this and what you do and having me tonight.
Indeed. You're always welcome. Would anyone else like to speak? See none. I will move on to acceptance of the agenda. I believe we have maybe a couple modifications, Mr. President.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I, first of all, I would like to table Section 7.1. I understand that the Jaguars Golf Team will be with us at a meeting in the future. And secondly, I request an executive session for preliminary discussion relating to the acquisition of real property. And would like to add such a, an executive session at the conclusion of our meeting or whatever is appropriate.
After item seventeen then?
After number seventeen.
Second. All right, we have a motion by C.R., a second by Troy, to modify the acceptance of this agenda by tabling item 7.1 and adding an executive session following Agenda item seventeen for the acquisition of real property. Further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number seventeen, seven, we do have some presentations this evening. We, of course, would table 7.1, so we'll move on to 7.2 concerning the Andover Central High School Lady Jaguars Track Team.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion.
Go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion to recognize the Andover Central Women's Track Team and their, and specifically the four-by-four-hundred relay team for winning the 5A state championship and further recognize the team, the track team's coaching staff and the young women for bringing such a positive attention to the Andover community.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Mike and a second by Caroline. Got to say, you know, we just started doing this very recently and I think it's, it's appropriate to recognize all the greatness in athletics that we have in this community. So we're really proud of all of you all and we wish you congratulations. And let's, let's vote on this motion. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Are members of that team here this evening? How many do we have?
I think the Coach Weeby is here with the team. If you wouldn't mind coming up and just speaking a little bit about their accomplishment and introducing your relay team there.
That would be awesome.
Yes, thank you for doing this. This is a really neat thing for the girls and they get to be recognized for all their hard work. Here present with us tonight are Brittany Harshaw and Kinsley Auction was not able to make it tonight. She had to work. Hannah Weeby.
Sure.
And Peyton Vinci. They won the state meet, four-by-four at the state meet this year. And we're just really pleased with all they've done and, and they helped us out on a lot of other events as well and qualified in some other events. So that was a really great way to end our season. Thank you.
Coach, if you and your Congratulations, ladies. That is a, that, when it stays is, is important and it's, it's an accomplishment. And I'm sure you guys worked yourselves off. Thanks for coming to the show this evening. I have a, did you already give us some pins? We have some city manager pins we'd like to give you. So again, thanks for being here. Congratulations. All right, we will move on to item 7.3. Andover Trojans, my alma mater, I might say. We have some track champions here, is that correct?
Yes.
Yes, and the coach is, step on up. Introduce your guys.
Did you want to make a motion at some point?
We will.
My name's Justin Hill. I'm the distance track coach at Andover High as well as the cross-country coach. And I've got four members of the four-by-eight team. They were the state champions in 5A. We broke, in addition to being state champions, we also broke a twenty-year record at, at school. Previous record was eight oh-three and these guys ran eight flat at the state meet, which was also the fastest four-by-eight of all classes that day. So huge accomplishment to be able to have four guys that can run about a two-minute half-mile. So also among these individuals, on the far right, we have Asher Moe and he's a senior. And he wasn't content with just one school record, so he went after a school record in a thirty-two-hundred as well the day before and also broke a school record in that. So he was state champion in the thirty-two-hundred and, and the four-by-eight. And the irony is that he broke his brother's record of two years ago. So wanted to get his brother's name off, off the board there. So, so that's Asher Moe and then next to him, we have Ryan Canaan, who's a junior. That day, he also ran the sixteen-hundred and broke the school record with a four-twenty. Also, again, breaking Asher's older brother, so he was a little disappointed that he didn't have his name up there anymore. But then we have Senior Josh Jackson and on the far right, far left, I should say, Samuel McDavid is a sophomore. And he ran the eight-hundred and was second in the eight-hundred and also broke the school record with a one-fifty-seven. So we had four school records and two first place and two runner-up. So huge accomplishment, their hard work and dedication. A lot of these guys started in the summer, well into cross-country season, maybe take a couple weeks off and then they get going again for track season, whether they were swimming in the winter for conditioning or getting ready for track season. So it's an all-year dedication and they've done a great job. So thank you guys for recognizing their hard work.
Let's, let's entertain a motion on that.
Okay. All right, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to honor the Andover Track, Trojan Track Team and specifically the four-by-eight, 5A men's state champion relay team and Asher Moe and the 5A champion in the thirty-two-hundred and further recognize the Trojan Track Team coaching staff for the accomplishments and these athletes for bringing such a positive attention to the entire Andover community.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Mike and a second by Caroline. Further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Let's get a picture. All right. We will move on to item number eight, which is the consent agenda. That's items eight-point-one through eight-point-ten.
Mr. Mayor, I would move to approve the consent agenda items as presented.
Second.
The eight-point-one through eight-point-ten inclusive.
Motion by C.R., second by Greg to approve the consent agenda as presented. Further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number nine. We have an annexation petition in front of us.
This seventy-five acre parcel is north of Twenty-first Street and east of Andover Road across the street essentially from the Cornerstone subdivision. It is adjacent to the city limits on its west border. And it has sanitary sewer across the street. It is served by Rural Water District Number Five. Staff in the Planning Commission have reviewed the annexation and would recommend that the track be annexed.
And the city can provide all the necessary utilities and police and fire and so forth?
Yes, it's adjacent to the existing city limits. The water would come from Rural Water District Number Five.
I see.
Mr. Mayor, Troy, make a motion to accept the Planning Commission's recommendations and approve the annexation of the subject property as presented.
Second.
A motion by Troy and a second by Caroline to accept the Planning Commission's recommendation and approve the annexation of the subject property as presented. Further discussion.
I just want to make sure this is at the request of the owner, is that correct?
Correct, the owner has petitioned.
Thank you.
Those, those are the good ones. Further discussion.
I got a question. On, when, we have property like this that comes into the city and the Rural Water District is servicing that, we don't take over that water eventually, do we?
No, Rural Water District is its own separate governing entity.
There's, there's a little history involved in that. Back in the day when we were accepting voluntary petitions for annexation and building subdivisions, for a while, we actually did that. We, we made an offer and compromise to buy out the Rural Water Districts, specifically one and sometimes five, buy out their investment in servicing water there. And then we did provide water. It's actually City of Wichita water, but that all came to a screeching halt probably two thousand, right before the Prairie Creek addition, so that's two thousand and eight.
Six, five.
Six or five. And Rural Water Districts, they start suing municipalities for taking over their water districts. It's, it's a little convoluted, but there are some state statutes, or federal statutes, I should say, that do protect the area of Rural Water Districts. Because their loans for their infrastructure are backed by the federal government. And so they actually use that territory as collateral, so to speak, for that. So it's, there's multiple instances of this that has happened thousandfold across the nation and all of a sudden it was like, so we do have some areas that we had bought out their investment in Rural Water Districts, but anything going forward since two thousand and eight, no, the Rural Water District has the right to service that property and, and they've so chosen to do it.
We're gonna, we're gonna run into this a lot more when the city expands.
Right.
And when we
You will.
Yeah, okay.
Mr. Mayor, do we have a possibility of a problem with the ones that we did buy out? They could come back and claim?
I don't know.
We have agreements with what was Rural Water District Eight, which is essentially south of Kellogg, that as we annex territory, that the city can provide public water through the Wichita Water Department without compensation to the Rural Water District. Will that stand up in court? That's a, that's a good question for a judge.
That particular district hasn't challenged anything yet.
But it's now one and the same.
Right.
Rural Water District Five, who is north of Kellogg, assumed Rural Water District Eight south of Kellogg, so it's all one, one district with one board, but they have different agreements with the city of Andover.
Okay. Better look forward to it. Further discussion.
I, I'm kind of late on it, but this land tract, is that just to the north of the cemetery then?
It's actually south of the cemetery.
It's south of the cemetery. So I'm, okay, I'm looking at, I'm looking at where Twenty-first Street is and isn't this whole thing going north?
If, if you
Which, is it the red outline when we're talking about, right?
Correct.
So
The cemetery is
Is that little cutout, the
Correct.
Okay, I thought the cemetery was that gray one below. So the Andover, what I'm wondering is the actual city limits now, this will extend the city limits in that portion, correct? And that will now be our northern boundary?
Yes, but it would be notched around the cemetery.
Right, okay. So over on the other side, which is Cornerstone, that yellow line is the northern boundary on that side of
Correct.
Andover Road.
Correct.
So the cemetery is just county property and will stay that way and will remain if something happens beyond that, it would just kind of be a little cookie-cut-out thing there, probably? Okay.
Okay, so we have a motion by Troy and a second by Caroline. Further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Let's move on to item number ten, which we have a rezoning case here. That's Z two thousand nineteen dash zero five. It's a change of the zoning district classification from the present I-40 to the single-family two, SF-two, single-family residential medium-density district. Before I proceed with this hearing, I'll ask if any of the council members intend to disqualify voting on this case because of a conflict of interest or any bias? All right. Has the city clerk received any protest petitions?
We have not received any petitions.
All right. Now I'll ask the council members if they've all received their copies of the draft minutes of the Planning Commission meeting for May twenty-first, two thousand nineteen, which summarizes the hearing.
We have.
All right, I'll ask the city zoning administrator to provide us a report on this case and a recommendation from the Planning Commission.
The original application for this case was for single-family zoning and commercial zoning adjacent to Andover Road. In the public hearings at the Planning Commission, the Planning Commission was opposed to extending more commercial property north of Twenty-first Street, which is contrary to our comprehensive plan. So the eventual motion from the Planning Commission was to modify the application to only single-family residential zoning. And the applicant agreed to that and gave the notion that in the future, if he had a commercial user, he might come back and apply for zoning adjacent to Andover Road for some potential business in the future. But ultimately, it was a unanimous vote of the Planning Commission to recommend that single-family zoning.
Is the applicant here this evening?
I don't see anyone here from the applicant.
I guess we'll move the discussion up here to the bench. Counsel, what's your, what's your pleasure?
Just a question. How many acres is that whole thing? How large?
About seventy-five acres.
Any other questions?
Mr. Mayor, I would move to adopt the Planning Commission's recommendation for approval of zoning case Z two thousand nineteen oh-four and approve an ordinance changing the zoning district classification from the present I-one industrial district to the mixed industrial commercial district to the B-three retail and service business district on property generally located at eleven oh-eight North Andover Road, Andover, Kansas.
I would ask you to amend that motion to item ten-point-one.
Back on ten-point-one?
Right. For some reason, the zoning cases are, we're doing two thousand nineteen oh-five now and oh-four is following it. They were backwards, so. Huh? Because of the address? Yeah, that's fine. You want to read item ten-point-one.
Oh. Okay.
Easy to do.
I'll read ten-point-one. Adopt the Planning Commission recommendation for approval of zoning case Z two thousand nineteen zero five and approve an ordinance changing the zoning classification from the present agricultural district forty, Perin's Butler County, to SF-two, single-family residential medium-density district.
Perfect. Is there a second?
Second.
A motion by C.R., second by Greg to approve zoning case Z two thousand nineteen dash zero five based on the findings and factors of the Andover Planning Commission as presented. Further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We'll move on to item ten-point-two, which is also zoning case concerning eleven oh-eight North Andover Road, zoning case two thousand nineteen dash zero four. Before I proceed with this hearing, I again have to ask you if any of you intend to disqualify yourselves from voting because you have a conflict of interest or bias on this case?
No.
Know the big fat no? Okay. Has the city clerk received any protest petitions?
No, we have not received any.
All right, I know you've already answered this, but I'll ask you again if you receive your copies of the Planning Commission draft minutes for May twenty-first, two thousand nineteen.
Yes.
I'll ask our zoning administrator to provide us a brief background report on this case and the recommendation from the Planning Commission.
This case is actually a proposition to downzone the property. It's currently zoned for industry and mixed industrial-commercial. Applicant desires to build a dance studio there and their proposal is for B-three retail and service business district. The Planning Commission held the public hearing on this at their May meeting and again recommended unanimously to approve the change in zoning.
Questions? I've seen it. It's a beautiful building. It's gonna look great right there.
It is. The case has been to the Site Plan Review Committee in a preliminary fashion and will be back next, next month for final approval.
It's exciting to get some activity in that area again, so. What's your pleasure, Counsel?
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt the Planning Commission recommendation for approval of zoning case Z dash two, twenty nineteen dash oh-four and approve an ordinance changing the zoning district classification from the present I-dash-one industrial district and mixed industrial-commercial district to B-three retail and service business district on property generally located at eleven oh-eight North Andover Road, Andover, Kansas.
Second. A motion by Greg and a second by Mike to approve zoning case two thousand nineteen zero four as presented. Further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We'll move on to item number eleven, eleven-point-one. We have some amended petitions for water sewer paving.
Yeah, yes, Mr. Mayor, as you recall, we adopted the Neighborhood Revitalization Plan last year and we were trying to target what I would consider entry-level housing or, you know, what is a, you know, range of one hundred and seventy-five to two hundred and twenty-five thousand, that type of housing in Andover. And it was an oversight that we probably didn't discuss this with the Cornerstone Development, Ritchie Developers in particular. And so what I'm suggesting tonight is that the council approves amended petitions where the city at large would help with the special assessments. It would be very difficult to go back, well, it'd be, I wouldn't want to do it, to go back and put this in the Neighborhood Revitalization Program. But the city attorney discussed with me, you know, some various options and he felt like the amended petition and us working with the developer on paying some of the special assessments in conjunction with the school district as well, who's signed this petition as well, would be the most equitable way to solve, solve this issue.
So because they're competing straight up with housing that is within the neighborhood revitalization program, same pricing?
Right.
I mean, that's essentially what we're doing.
That's what we're
We're trying to level back the playing field.
Correct.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, I move to accept petition submitted by USD three eighty-five and Ritchie Development Corporation for Water Sewer and Paving for improvements to Cornerstone Eighth Edition to the city of Andover, Kansas and further authorize the city of Andover to reduce the contribution of Ritchie Development by thirty percent for each designated improvement.
Second. A motion by Greg, second by C.R. to approve the amended petitions as presented. Further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
To go Mr. Mayor, then I would recommend that we approve the resolution, amending resolution eighteen dash oh-eight of the city of Andover, Kansas authorizing water sewer and paving improvements in Cornerstone Eighth Edition to the city of Andover, Kansas.
Second. A motion by Caroline, second by Troy to approve the resolution, amending resolution eighteen zero eight. Further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Eleven-point-three is the aforementioned ordinance.
Then I would recommend that we approve the ordinance, amending ordinance sixteen sixty-four authorizing improvements in the Cornerstone Eighth Edition to the city of Andover, Kansas.
Second. A motion by Caroline, second by Troy approving the ordinance, amending the ordinance sixteen sixty-four as prescribed. Further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number twelve, Prairie Creek Fourth Phase. We have before us an engineering contract?
We do and I'm pinch hitting for Steve, who was pinch hitting for Rick, so let's not play stump the public works director. This contract is for all of the engineering services for the fourth phase of Prairie Creek, including the improvements to Thirteenth Street adjacent to the subdivision.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the agreement with Baughman Company for engineering services for Prairie Creek Edition, fourth phase in, in the not-to-exceed amount of one hundred and fifty-five thousand, three hundred dollars and authorize the mayor to sign the agreement.
Second.
A motion by Greg, second by Caroline to approve the engineering contract with Baughman Company as, as listed. Further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number thirteen, Prairie Creek Fifth Phase.
This is the engineering contract for the fifth phase of the Prairie Creek Edition for all the public improvements.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve the agreement with Baughman Company for engineering services for Prairie Creek Edition Fifth Phase in the amount not to exceed one hundred and seventy-eight thousand, seven hundred dollars, and authorize the mayor to sign the agreement.
Second.
Motion by Troy, second by Caroline, to approve the engineering contract with Baughman and Company for the Fifth Phase of Prairie Creek Edition as presented. Further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number fourteen, one hundred and fifty-ninth Street Central to Kansas Turnpike Project.
At your last meeting, you approved a contract to build water and sewer lines adjacent to one hundred and fifty-ninth Street from about Central Avenue to Thirteenth Street. This amendment to the Trans Systems contract is simply to add the construction engineering services for the water and sewer work on that project.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve Amendment K. to the Trans Systems contract for the one hundred and fifty-ninth Street Improvements Project, adding construction engineering services for water and sewer project to, to the scope of work.
Second. Motion by Greg, second by C R. to approve the Trans Systems Amendment K. for one hundred and fifty-ninth Street to K T A Project. Further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number fifteen, point one, and we have a change order number four for the Yorktown Parkway Improvement.
This is kind of a accumulation of several different activities. The Yorktown Parkway improvements were divided into two phases, from Kellogg to Douglas is one phase, from Douglas to Central is another. And then the mass grading for the Phase Two project from Douglas to Central was added to the schools' mass grading project to get the economy of scale. And, and at your last meeting, you approved that work. That was about half of the engineer's estimate. What this change order does generally is to add the erosion control items for the mass grading project to the existing contract for Phase One, and there is one other small change order in some conduit additions. Michael Bailey's here from Trans Systems. If you have any questions, otherwise I need to fill in that blank that was left there in the total number. That number is forty-eight thousand, seventy-six dollars and nineteen cents.
Is that all borne by the City of Andover? Did the entire change order cost?
No, the erosion control would be that Phase Two of the project, which is a seventy-five, twenty-five split with U S D. three eighty-five, seventy-five percent city.
Yes, I have a question. Our notes indicate that that's a forty-six thousand, five hundred and eighteen.
That's a, that's a typo on my part. Forty-six, five, eighteen is that set of items that's separated out that goes to Phase Two project.
So forty-eight, oh, seven, six, one, nine is a proper number.
Correct.
Mr. Mayor, I would move to approve change order number four to the Yorktown Parkway Street Improvement Project Contract with Corneo and Sons in the amount of forty-eight thousand, seventy-six dollars and nineteen cents.
Second. Motion by C R., second by Greg, to approve change order four as presented. Further discussion.
I have a quick question.
Go on.
Maybe not exactly on this, but it's, uh, the corner of Douglas and where Yorktown's going in now, where Douglas is all tore up. Do we have any idea when that'll be, when Douglas will be back?
The intersection will be open when school starts session in August.
Beginning of school in August?
Yes.
Okay.
Did we ever think about adding Douglas from Yorktown to Andover Road into this project? I know we talked about it, but perhaps some reengineering there of that light and that road. Probably gonna be in order one of these days.
We've had some discussions about the intersection at Douglas and Andover Road with the increased traffic to the school campus and
In the amphitheater.
Potentially some trips from Yorktown over to Andover Road, as well as some drainage that we question in that area. That's something we continue to investigate as staff, and we'll probably end up hiring a consultant to help us out a little bit with some potential improvements.
I'd just hate to see Yorktown finished through there and then have to go back and tear part of it up to expand Douglas or whatever we're doing.
We've had some preliminary conversations with Trans Systems, and, and they think there, there is an interim step, the potential to add a phase to those traffic signals that would protect a left turn in the existing four lanes before progressing to adding a fifth lane dedicated to left turns.
Mayor, I agree with you. That, that light's already a mess now.
Can be.
When you do set at that light, it allows about two cars to get out, and then you're waiting for the next cycle. So, um, there's, and you're right, it does flood at that, on the east side of that. So when we have any substantial water, you're going through quite a bit at that intersection, so.
As long as we're cognizant of that and are looking at it, if there's an interim step, then I suppose that's fine. But, um, I assume that interim's gonna have to probably follow quickly on the heels of Yorktown. Okay, so we had a motion and a second. Who seconded that motion?
I believe I did.
Who made it?
I believe, I'm not sure I seconded it.
You made it?
You made it, I seconded it.
Oh, I think.
Oh, my God, you, you're on fire. No wonder I'm getting confused.
I think I was on third.
I don't know who's on second.
I don't know why. Okay, we have motion by C R. and second by Greg to approve change order number four. Did we even vote on it? No. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Move on to item sixteen, which is marketing study for the ballfield complex. Potential.
So, Mr. Mayor and Counsel, as you recall, we've been doing quite a bit of surveying on recreational, uh, use in the Andover area. And of the many things we found out, uh, we know we have, or, or we would project we have between two and three thousand, uh, kids playing softball and baseball in the Andover area. And that's, you know, the seven hundred or seven hundred and fifty or so that we had this year in, uh, our recreation program, plus the Y does another about five hundred and fifty in their, their programs. And then we estimate, you know, upwards of a thousand kids are going elsewhere for softball and baseball. So we, uh, Ms., uh, Councilmember Warrington and the mayor and I met with the school district last week, and what I proposed, and I think the superintendent was in agreement with me, is that we probably need to do some initial, uh, some additional analysis on what our community can support in terms of a ballfield complex, and looking at it at a, in a wider perspective, such as the, the people we know are leaving for West Urban and Two Rivers Softball, uh, and also Southwest Boys Club. Additionally, we know we have quite a few people who are leaving the community to play soccer, and we'd like to look at that. I know we have, uh, a, a new complex going in at Stryker over on Webb, but still overall, I think it's worth the analysis. The school district pledged last night to contribute six thousand dollars to this effort. It's seventeen thousand dollars plus travel expenses, so I'm asking the council tonight to approve fourteen thousand dollars, up to fourteen thousand dollars on our behalf. I'm hoping we only have to have one meeting with this group initially where they have to come, and we have to cover travel costs for that. But hopefully coming back to you with some names that I'd like to serve on that committee to talk about this. But overall, I think the market analysis is money well spent before we get too far down the road on this. We may just be looking at, you know, uh, some reconstruction of Thirteenth Street Park and adding some fields, but I think it's worth our time to look at a larger-scale project and, and see what we can possibly afford.
Mark, I agree with you. This is, uh, something that's well-needed for our city and the kids that, you know, um, play here and the ones that don't live here but live near here that come to, uh, uh, Andover to play, uh, sports and, and, uh, and if we're full, then we're having to, you know, make them go somewhere else. So I, I think this is a, a good study for us to consider and, and, uh, for future ballfields or redoing ballfields or, um, wiping everything, um, flat and starting all over or whatever, wherever the study comes up to. But, uh, I have a feeling that it's gonna come up to that we need to do something, so.
Was that a motion?
Sounded like it.
Caroline, did you have something?
I just had a question, but if yours is a motion, I can wait to lap forward. My question is, where are we, money for this, is it gonna come out of administrative? I was just hoping it wasn't gonna be a park yet.
Yep, so parks. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to authorize the city administrator to work with the school superintendent to develop a contract with Sports Facility Advisory, uh, Adver- ah, sorry, L L C. To, of Clearwater, Florida, to perform a marketing feasibility study for a ballfield complex in Andover, Kansas, and further authorize the mayor to sign an agreement between the city and S F, S F A, um, for such study and author, further authorize the staff to spend up to fourteen thousand dollars of the city's funds for said study.
Second. Motion by Mike, second by Greg, to approve the fourteen thousand dollar expenditure of city funds with the Sports Facility Advisory as presented. Further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item seventeen, the long-anticipated police budget. It's finally before us.
Could you bring me a pair of scissors, please?
Three minutes. I don't know if I can get it down into three, but I will tell you, my original presentation was about five to six slides, and as I watched the other ones and questions that were asked, this grew to about sixteen slides. But I promise you, I will be quick. Uh, I will be as quick as possible. Soon as I know how to work this. Okay, uh, one of the first things that actually Mark suggested is rather than compare our budgets with our expenditures, that we break these up. So the first few slides are gonna be on.
I don't mean to stop you, but I'm going to. Why don't these TVs work?
I think we've got, uh.
Screens?
Technical difficulties?
Yeah, I think that's continuously.
I mean, it's on our, uh, it's on our iPads, but.
But yeah, it's easy, I know it's easier for you guys to look up and look at it.
Really? Huh. Okay, continue on, but we'll work on that.
Lost my place already.
You were at the beginning.
We're, we're gonna split up, as Mark suggested, uh, previously, to separate the expenditures from the budget, our current budget and proposed budget. So these first few slides are gonna be on expenditures only for the previous five years, two thousand and fourteen through two thousand and eighteen. This first slide, uh, shows our personnel expenditures for these five years. You see, we had a significant increase in two thousand and fifteen, and that was due to the merger of the nine-one-one budget and the police budget into one. We consolidated all of that into one. And, and we also, that year in fifteen, we added two S R Os, uh, to, to our staffing. In two thousand and seventeen, there's a, another, uh, increase, and we, that year, we, trying to read my own notes, we, we added a civilian accreditation manager, uh, and we, um, had some other building repairs and, and, uh, increases. And then the, the last year, in two thousand and eighteen, we didn't add any positions. I, I think most of that increase was due to salary, uh, increases, um, but we didn't add any staffing. The next one is contractual expenditures, and again, uh, the budget stayed consistently through two thousand and seventeen on contractuals. In seventeen, we had a significant increase, but about sixty thousand of that was another transfer of expenses from the, this time from the I T budget. Uh, these were all communication-type-related contractuals that had been being paid out of I T. About sixty thousand of that was transferred to this budget, uh, from the I T budget. And then, um, and then in eighteen, we actually had a little bit of a decrease in contractuals, significant decrease. Next one is commodity expenditures, and, uh, this one has really kind of gradually increased, but stayed fairly consistent over the last four years. In eighteen, we had a, a, a little bit of a jump there. I know thirteen, about thirteen thousand of that was we purchased body armor, uh, tactical body armor for an active shooter-type incident for our staff, uh, which would have been a significant part of, of that increase. Capital outlay, we had, uh, in fifteen, we went from replacing two vehicles a year to three vehicles a year. Then in sixteen, we had a, um, increase there. That was, that included three vehicles, and it also included, uh, basement furniture for, for the remodeled basement for the investigation section that we did. We lost everything. And then, um, and also included the cell phone towers that we put on the Red Bud Trail, which was about twenty-five thousand, which took up most of that cap, uh, capital outlay there. The, uh, then we reduced it in seventeen back to three vehicles, and in eighteen, we once again replaced three vehicles. Uh, but we've had a significant increase in the cost on, on the vehicles. Next slide is transfer. In fourteen, we typically normally put about ten to fifteen thousand into our transfer or equipment reserves, uh, saving it for future expenditures. In fourteen and fifteen, we bumped those up a little bit, putting more money in there because we already knew we were planning to remodel the basement in sixteen, which was about ninety thousand dollars. And then also in seventeen, to replace all of our outdated body camera and vehicle cameras, which we were able to save the money ahead of time and pay for it outright. Uh, and then in seventeen, uh, in nineteen, I'm sorry, in eighteen, at the end of the year, we had a significant reduction in our actual expenses from our budget, and, uh, we put about ninety thousand into reserves for some future project yet to be identified. Next slide, this is the total budget, operating budget for the police and communications nine-one-one center. You see, we have a gradual increase. Again, I will point out, two thousand and fifteen included, uh, the merger of the nine-one-one budget along with the police department budget into one and added two S R Os. The next, uh, jump, good-sized jump, was in seventeen. Again, that sixty thousand of that came from a transfer from I T budget to police. And, and then in the next jump into eighteen, uh, ninety thousand of that was a transfer that I talked about earlier. So now we're gonna transition from what we actually spent in the five years, fourteen to eighteen, to now. This is the two thousand and nineteen budget that we're currently under and what we're proposing for two thousand and twenty. Uh, the top line is personnel. You see, uh, an increase, increase of about sixty thousand, and that includes a three percent cost-of-living merit increase for personnel wages and one full-time employee, new employee, that I will talk about here shortly. If you look down to contractuals, there's, uh, very little increase to that. The vast majority of, or, all of that increase is due to an aging building that is starting to need a lot of maintenance, replacement. I think this includes two new, uh, H VAC rooftops. Um, so a lot of that increase is mainly due to building maintenance and upkeep. The commodities, virtually no increase, and then our capital outlay is a, um, a fairly large reduction. That includes a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. For that hundred and thirty, that includes three new vehicles and about ten thousand dollars for a storage shed, uh, to be purchased and, and built for our, basically, storage of some of our equipment and, and evidence. So we move on to capital projects. First thing I wanted to point out, I, I need, I'm sorry, I need to back out because I forgot to talk about the full-time, uh, position. to talk about the full-time, uh, position that we're asking for. What we're asking for in two thousand and twenty is a new full-time civilian employee that would be basically dual-trained as a community service officer, which means they'll be able to handle walk-in reports, fingerprints, um, cases that come in, questions for officers. They'll also be able to handle the traffic at the Wendell or customer, uh, service, people that come in and want copies of reports. They'll also be trained as a dispatcher, so that we'll have actually two dispatchers on duty. The plan to do this over, over the next few years would be to add them so that we end up having coverage of, uh, around the clock, but this initial part is just, um, just to start, to, to start the program off. I, I can tell you, in two thousand and eighteen, we had over a hundred walk-in reports to the police department. We had almost as many outside arrests, but I think it was ninety-eight, in, uh, where someone was arrested outside of Andover, on an Andover warrant. Uh, all of that takes a report, an officer coming to the station and doing a report. We had about fifty questions for officers, people walking in, just wanting to talk to an officer and ask a question. We had two hundred and eleven incidents where we did fingerprints for people that came in, and about a hundred and fifty-two other services that were provided to. So all, all over, um, we had over six hundred times where an officer had to be called in off the street to handle this, uh, these calls. This person, this new full-time person would be doing that, obviously, for about twelve hours out of the day. Uh, we wouldn't have full coverage with just one. Um, this will also, they would also be able to assist our detectives, would follow-up calls, it would improve our customer service at the Wendell, and, uh, probably one of the most important things is that we would have two people there to actively dispatch, uh, for any major event, large structure fire, uh, robbery, any type of ma- major traffic accident, we would have two people available to be on the, on the console. Now I move to the capital projects.
May I interrupt you and ask a question?
Yeah, absolutely.
There's one thing you said that threw me off a little. Would this employee, which I think this sounds like a great idea, but would this employee be working the hours of dispatch or working police? Because y- you're only gonna have one new employee, so there's gonna be some days that don't get hit, I would imagine.
Uh, you're absolutely right. We can't obviously full, uh, our, our police and our dispatch work the same hours.
So they do have the same.
Twenty, twenty-four hours, seven days a week.
Okay. So isn't it like a twelve, I mean, aren't they doing longer shifts and?
The, the exact time that this person would work, we haven't defined that yet.
Okay.
It, it very well could be an eight-hour-a-day, five-day-a-week, uh, Monday through Friday initially. The long-range plan is to eventually be able to cover it twenty-four-seven and have two people available. Um, but that would be.
Right.
Several years down the road.
All right, that, that clears it up for me. Thank you.
Um, capital, capital outlay, capital projects. First thing, if you'll notice, there's thirty-five thousand dollars put at the very top line there for a manpower study. Uh, that's actually been removed out of the budget. Mark and I have talked, and we believe we have the funding available this year to do this. This would be a staffing study, someone from the outside coming in and looking at our, our needs, the police department, and seeing if our staffing is appropriate, uh, or if w- they would recommend additional staffing. Uh, we, w- we believe we have funding available in this year's, and that's something I would be bringing later this year. Obviously, if this study came back later this year and said, "We don't need more staffing", that full-time per- person would not be included, and we wouldn't be hiring that person at the beginning of the year. If the staffing study comes back and says we need more, then we're gonna take a serious look at adding that person, uh, and getting it started in there. The other two things on, on the capital projects are what I've already mentioned, the ten thousand dollars for a storage shed, for, uh, extra equipment, and, uh, some things like recovered bicycles and things that we have to hold on to. And then the other hundred and twenty is for, uh, three new vehicles. Wanted to show you a little bit about full-time employees. Um, you can see in the top line is our sworn staff. That is our police officers. And we increased in two thousand and fifteen, we added two SROs. Keep in mind, seventy-five percent of that comes from the school district. So we're only paying, uh, for those two people, we're only paying a equivalent of a one-half employee. Um, and then in two th- uh, thousand and sixteen, we added the detective to where we currently have two detectives now for our department. Uh, we haven't added any sworn positions since two thousand and sixteen. That middle line is our communications people, and you see, it's pretty flat, it's six-point five. It's been six-point five since, uh, the last twelve years that I've been here. We have not added any communication staff. This, this person that we're asking for in twenty will be the first one that, uh, that we've added to communications during at least the last twelve years. The very bottom line is our civilian staff on the, uh, uh, police department. The, uh, we hired an administrative assistant, a little over eight years ago, back in two thousand and eleven, and then we added a civilian accreditation manager in two thousand and seventeen to handle our accreditation process. Just to show you that our staffing is not, um, this thing's falling apart, is not out of line. I took the, uh, seven of the cities that, in the state, that are equivalent in size to us, and you can see, uh, with, with our population, these are estimated populations, uh, based on the US Census estimates. Uh, we have twenty-six sworn officers, and you can see, that's pretty consistent. Uh, there are several agencies, uh, similar size, maybe a little smaller with, uh, with more officers or about the same. Through these, uh, service deals, you can see our calls for service have continued to increase over the years since two thousand and eight. Slowly goes up. We had a big jump in fifteen, slight, uh, a good reduction in sixteen, and starting to go back up again in seventeen. Um, the, as population goes up, our calls for service are gonna go up. Our arrests and incident reports, uh, arrests, uh, again, as, uh, we've kept them pretty consistent. Uh, we kept our incident reports down, uh, and our, and our arrests. Basically, I, I write that off to, A, a low crime rate, and some really great policing. Gotta throw that in there. Um, last part, citations and accidents. Uh, you can see, the top line is our citations that we issue. That has gone up as our population has grown, our traffic has grown, and our citations have grown. There is research that shows that as citations increase, traffic accidents decrease, especially injury accidents. You can see, our numbers are fairly low, uh, for a city our size. I believe several years ago, four or five years ago, we were ranked as the second safest city in regards to traffic accidents in the state, and since that time, our, you can see, our accidents have actually gone down. Um, so that, that the officers do a great job in our traffic enforcement. Um, last slide, we, our serv- our department is very big on service. We're service-oriented. We provide a lot of services, too many to put on one slide. This is not all the services we provide, just some of the, uh, bigger ones. I wanted to point out a couple. Some of these are not common to other departments, surely not these numbers. Uh, we have a great partnership with our neighborhood associations, with officers being assigned to all the active ones in the community, uh, and build that community, communications between the department and the neighborhoods. Uh, we share that same program with the, uh, Chamber of Commerce, where we, uh, have built partnerships with our businesses. Our open garage door program, it's not too many departments that have that, uh, where we continue to patrol and let people know they left their garage doors open. Our vehicle unlock service, most departments stopped that a long time ago. We still, if you're in need and you need a, your vehicle unlocked, we will do it at no charge. And our traffic safety program and our traffic safety committee, uh, as example, the last council meeting where we just won our eighth consecutive AAA award, our traffic safety committee and program is, uh, unparalleled at any other place in, in the state. With that, I'd be happy to answer questions. That was fast.
In your opinion.
I'm sorry.
Good job.
Questions? Well, Chief, you are our most expensive department.
We're also the largest.
Yes. Well, anyways, onward and upward goes your budget, so. You do a good job. Use your resources wisely, and yes, I've seen the comparisons for a number of officers, sworn officers from city to city, and we do a remarkable job with, with the staff we have, so.
Thank you, sir.
Any questions?
No question, but just, a- again, every presentation from all the departments we've been receiving has really been outstanding, and this is another outstanding presentation to present us. Thank you.
We will take your budget under advisement.
Thank you, sir.
All right, um, let's move on to, um, I guess we're gonna squeeze in the executive session here at this time.
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor, I would move to, uh, recess into executive session for discussion relating to the acquisition of real property pursuant to KSA seventy-five dash forty-three nineteen B six. Session to include the governing body, city administrator, city attorney, and the public works director. The, I'm gonna estimate that it would be a twenty-minute meeting, and we would reconvene twenty minutes from, from the recess, and I'll leave that up to the police force to check that out.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Motion by C.R., and second by Troy, to go into executive session per, uh, KSA seventy-five forty-three nineteen B sub-session six, uh, for the purposes of, uh, discussion relating to the acquisition of real property. Uh, session include governing bodies, city administrators, city attorney, and the public works director for approximately twenty minutes. Further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Any opposed? Motion carries. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Okay.
Okay, counsel, I need a motion to come out of executive session.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Troy, second by CR to come out of executive session. Further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I guess we are down to member items. Caroline, would you like to start us off?
Uh, I had one in mind and now it's gone out of my mind.
We can come back to you.
But I would like to just remind the chief to share, please, and to share about the festival that went on, it was really great, on June 1st, when it gets to be your turn.
Oh, okay. We had great weather. Both Caroline and CR were out there with us. We had fantastic weather, great music. No arrests, a lot of activities. I believe, we had some estimates, it was much more difficult to tell how many were there because it's so spread out now. We had the band at the amphitheater, there was people over the gazebo, over in front of the library where the fire department was spraying down the kids, just all over the park. But we're estimating 17, 1800, probably our largest crowd ever. Great weather, great time, no complaints, no injuries, nothing. Great.
That's good.
My son turned 16 yesterday, so he's driving.
Wow, good.
Ben likes to hear that.
Yes.
Likes 16-year-old driver.
Great.
There goes your stats.
Yeah, that's all.
CR.
Uh, yes, I want to say that the festival was wonderful, well done as usual. I also want to thank everybody for your condolences for the death of my mother-in-law and it was a blessing and so forth, but I certainly appreciate everybody's thoughts. That's all that I have.
Mike, done tonight. Staff, have anything?
I just want to let you know, and I think I put a brief memo in this, that the school district is asking to use the ACC, they do this from time to time for a work fair in October, and I just want to make sure we understand we're still giving the school district no cost and of course, they're interrupting pickleball time with this, but I, you know, periodically we do this and I just want to remind the council of that and make sure nobody has any objections. It's not.
They're steadily letting us use their parking lot for after hours events.
We also use their, I mean.
Auditorium.
Yeah, auditorium.
We use a lot of stuff, that's, yeah. Okay, thank you, and I understand a few of you have been having trouble with email and a couple other things here recently, and I just want to make sure you know you can get with Craig and sit down and try to figure out, there's, there has been some changes on that and.
Did you change the host, your email host?
Yes.
To who, where? There was some weird stuff going on there.
He told me today when he fixed mine.
Yeah, so, yes, yes.
I've been missing some emails from you.
Right, please, if you don't think you're getting stuff, please get with him and make sure that your iPad's set up correctly, and then there's one other thing, wasn't there? Maybe not.
The cornhole tournament, was that what it was?
Yeah, I hadn't, yeah.
June 21st, that's 21st, Friday night.
Yeah, are you really starting that at 2:00 in the afternoon?
It says.
On a Friday?
I think it's later, I think the check-in starts at 2:00, something like that.
How'd they do that on a Friday?
Starts at 3:00, I believe.
Yeah, I registered.
So, God, we're going to be dead.
Is that right?
Corn to be wild?
Corn to be wild.
Yes.
All right.
Well, while we're at it, we just should mention our first concert on the 29th, too.
Might be a good idea, yeah.
I think we're, what is the, it's our Red Dirt Festival, is that correct?
Red Dirt Roundup.
And then I would let Jenny say the acts because I don't know if, I don't know much about Red Dirt.
Um, we've got a couple local bands, Morrison County, and I'm going to mess up one of them now. Mountain Deer Revival, that'll be opening in the afternoon, and then Wade Bowen, Jack Ingram, are pretty well-known acts, but the main show will be Pat Green and that show will, gates will open at 3:00 and we'll start at 4:00 and it will go until 10, 11 o'clock, depending on how smoothly all our transitions go. Earlier in the day, right up until gates opening, there will be a truck rally over at Andover Central Middle that KWLS is really working hard to promote and so they're trying to promote, come bring your truck out, check out the other trucks, and then stay for the show as well, so kind of exciting. And then in July, we'll have Blues and Brews, and August is our kind of alternative rock show with Eve 6, Fuel, and Spin Doctors.
That'll be our biggest show.
Oh, yeah, it always is. Anything else?
Happy Father's Day for all the fathers coming up Sunday.
This Sunday. Okay, let's get out of here.
I move to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Caroline, second by Greg. Further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We adjourn.